And we're trying to get them.
And we're trying to get them.
And we're trying to get them.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome to the City Council's study session.
Study session.
Okay. Still working on audio solutions to hybrid in-person and online. We're missing Councilmember Canir and Bengal today who are on vacation. And the session today is going to help us learn about, learn more, especially for this newer council, about some opportunities that are out there where we can save money and energy and figure out how to finance that. And so I'm going to introduce Cara Odegaard first, who is our Initiatives Manager for Sustainability. And she has a guest from the state. And so Cara, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Alyssa Wirick. She's one of the Energy Program Managers at the State Department of Enterprise Services. And she's here today to help us better understand some of the energy programs that they have available that might help us, might help us, might help us.
Hello.
Both potential energy projects and water-saving projects at the city. So Alyssa, do you want to go ahead and, I think you should be able to share your screen if you want to begin.
I'll kind of bring up the presentation.
Yeah. Thank you.
So as Cara stated, I'm one of the project managers who works with the Department of Enterprise Services Energy Program. And our focus is energy-saving performance contracting. I'm going to go over just a real quick few acronyms I might slip into as we speak because there are a lot within our documentation. And sometimes instead of saying it out loud, I just might slip back into it. The first is ESPC, which is Energy Saving Performance Contracting. It's an alternative contracting method similar to design bid build. ESCO, when I say ESCO, I'm referring to an energy service company. They're one of the companies that we pre-qualify to be on our list each biennium. An IGA is an investment-grade audit. That's where the ESCO goes into your facility and gets down into the specifics of what energy savings could be available. ESP, this is a document prepared by the ESCO, reviewed by DES or ourselves, that covers the project scope, savings, cost, and it's the basis of the contract if you were to move the contract. And then M and V, measurement and verification. For all of our projects, we require at least a minimum of one year where the ESCO goes back and confirms that the energy savings were achieved and that the job is performing as anticipated or as promised. And then I like to also go into the legislative authority that gives our program the ability to work with agencies. So RCW 3935 is pretty much what we live under. It is where it states that municipalities, agencies may use performance-based contracting to do energy and water conservation. In 3904, it defines what an agency is. So a lot of times I might state state agencies, but when I say that, I'm talking about any governing authority within the state of Washington. It could be a port, a town, a district of any kind. And then 3935 also states that DES is required to have a list of qualified energy service companies available. And once again, we do this each biennium. And then again, 3935 states that if a municipality or agency chooses to use our process, that it satisfies all of your procurement requirements. So no other public works requirements are necessary. No bidding out. If you use our selection process, then all of those requirements have been met. Oops, look at this one. And then finally, it states that we are to assist you in developing and implementing conservation measures that are found when we're working with you. So we've been in existence since 1986. Personally, I've been with the program for about 13 years. And we do do a lot of projects every biennium. We have thousands of projects, and we have lots of different client-agency types. I've listed a few here, as well as the state agencies, port districts, libraries, hospitals. And then I've also listed some local agencies that are currently working with us. So Spokane Community Colleges, Spokane Transit, the airport, MAC, the school district, and the regional health district just recently started down this road with selecting an ESCO. What role does DES play when we're working with agencies? Well, first, as I stated, we have the legislative authority. We've created the list. We've selected the ESCOs. But we also provide project oversight. So we have a master energy service agreement that every ESCO we select signs. It outlines the requirements that they are to meet if they are to be on the list. We also have the contractual framework. We have developed all the contracts where you do not have to develop any for yourself that the ESCOs have already agreed to abide by. And they've also already been approved by the Attorney General. All of our documentations have gone through the Attorney General's office for review and approval. And then finally, financial transparency. During our project, when we go to construction, the ESCOs are required to substantiate all of their construction costs, materials, labor, site super, commissioning, anything related to construction, they are required to substantiate so that you can actually see where your dollars are going during the project. What's the role of an energy service company? Basically, they are, like I said, a design-build firm. When we select them, they have to confirm that they are able to handle a project from beginning to end. They can go out, identify measures that need to be implemented. They can engineer them, design them, and then they can implement them into construction. All of our energy service companies are also general contractors. So all the subs that work on your project will be a sub to the ESCO. They also commission the work. And then again, like I said, they measure and verify the energy savings a year after the project has been substantially complete to confirm that they have met their energy savings that they promised. The benefits of using our program, they include, well, one, we do the ESCO selection, and we have all the contracts, once again, approved by the Attorney General's office. In our process, there is no direct contractual relationship between the energy service company and the city. The ESCO is contracted with us, and the city is contracted with us. So therefore, we have oversight of the ESCO. We're technically the city's representative. So we work with you to get the project you want, and we tell the ESCO, we work with the ESCO all collaboratively to make sure that the project you're looking for is completed. We're able to quickly procure projects because the ESCOs are general contractors, and they're turnkey, they're one step. They go in and they find everything. There's no bidding out, which saves time. There's no prep-of-your-own request-for-proposals, which saves time. So that is another benefit. You can get multiple bids for work, but you are not subject to low bid acceptance because all of the procurement requirements have been met once you agree to work with us through an inter-agency agreement. You're able to select subcontractors in equipment. Say you have a standard in your facilities that you only use a specific type of equipment, you're able to do that under this process. And again, a lot of people use our program. When I say subcontractor selection, like a small district will want to do a project, and they want local subcontractors so that the community knows that they're not sending their money outside of the area. So that's one of the benefits that a lot of our clients like. And then typically, funding is available through state treasurer loan program. There's always the commerce grant, utility incentives, of course, your own capital. But the original program was based off of using energy savings to fund the project. So if you did get a loan, the energy savings would be the payment toward that loan. So that's typically our goal. We want to be cost-neutral or positive, cash flow-neutral positive, and we want to keep the project where it can be paid for with energy savings. Doesn't always work out that way, but that's the main goal. There are three guarantees in our program. And the first is a guaranteed not-to-exceed project cost. So when the energy service company provides the energy service proposal with the project scope, they are giving you a not-to-exceed price. There will be contingency, but that contingency is to be used for unforeseen circumstances or conditions. Or if we're at the end of the project and there's additional work or other scope that the city would want added in, we can add it in using contingency. But for the most part, we are not to exceed. There's also a minimum energy savings guarantee. So again, in the energy service proposal, the ESCO will say, we've calculated that we will save you this amount of energy, therm, kilowatt-hours, water savings, and they must meet that guarantee. If they do not meet that guarantee, they are to come back and either make improvements to make sure you do meet it, or they write you a check for the difference in what you should have saved in your utility bills versus what you actually saved. And then the last one is equipment performance. If we're improving the comfort level of the occupants in your facility, we're saying that you're going to have this much outside airflow coming in, or we want to make sure that that's met. If it's not, again, the ESCO is to come back and make adjustments to the system to make sure it's performing as promised, as guaranteed in the ESP. Some types of projects that we typically do, pretty much anything that's an energy-using system, we can do. Lighting projects, HVAC, boilers, chillers, solar. We're currently starting doing a lot of projects where we're doing sub-metering for agencies so they can determine what they need to do for the Clean Building Performance Standard, how that can be met. Groundwater, irrigation, street lighting, wastewater facilities, any number of energy-saving projects. And also carbon-reducing projects we can also do. So I know Cara mentioned that you were considering solar, so I just wanted to put this slide in here so that you can have some considerations for how that would work within our program. Typically, we install solar on a facility based off of its energy use, its baseline energy use. And it's typically after other measures have been done to the facility. So LED lighting, controls, HVAC upgrades that have already reduced the energy use from that facility. Also, because if you're going to put on an existing facility, which is what we typically work, we only work on existing facilities, you need to consider the site location and its orientation. Another one I did not include is whether or not it's on a historical register. So if it is, you also need to consider how you would change the looks of the facility. Structural analysis of existing facilities, because we have snow loads, wind loads. And so if we're going to put something on the roof of a facility, we need to evaluate that. There are alternatives to a facility. We have lots of projects that are at wastewater treatment facilities, at wells. I haven't had one at a landfill yet, but they are allowed if they have energy-using systems. And then we also do electric vehicle charging stations. So if you're considering switching your fleet over to electrical, we could look at a location for that and how far along you are, depend on what size system you need or if you're planning ahead. But we can do electric vehicle charging stations powered by solar. And then again, you'll want to negotiate with the Vista for your net metering agreement. I know they have some requirements in regards to aggregation across meters in their net metering agreement. And then finally, you want to consider purpose limitations, the 100-kilowatt-hour limit. If you exceed that, it changes you from being in a simple net metering agreement with a Vista to potentially having that production sold on the wholesale market. So those are all things that you want to have in consideration when we look at potentials for solar. And then finally, for the process for a project, normal sequence. If you say you found a project you wanted to complete, we sign an inter-agency agreement, and then the city would do an ESCO selection. And this is an internal process. Every agency is different. There's no need to advertise. We have 14 ESCOs, about eight of them actually work in eastern Washington, and about four, if you're interested in solar, have national solar groups. This would be just, I know you've spoken with, some staff has spoken with McKinstry, so you could look at our list, or I could give you some information on who has additional resources in this area. And you could select to interview them, or you could just select an ESCO. It's really an internal city process. And then after that, the ESCO would perform a preliminary audit, and this audit is at no cost. This is where you either direct them to what you want them to evaluate initially and come back to you with what potential there could be, or you set them to go look at all of your facilities or a few facilities. And they go and they look at all the energy-using systems, water, electrical, gas. If you want them to look for potential for solar, they would do that as well. And this is at no cost to the city. The next step is an investment-grade audit. And this is where they take what they found in the preliminary audit, and they speak with you and me, and we refine the scope to what's a priority, what looks like a large need, what can we finance, you know, all of those considerations. And we would narrow that down. And this would be where the first cost to the city would occur. We would pay, commit to paying the ESCO for the effort of doing that in-depth audit. This also includes 20% to 30% design on the measures that we directed them to investigate further, full energy analysis, discussions with the Vista in regards to potential incentives. So all of that is done during this investment-grade audit. At the end of that audit is when the energy service proposal comes in. And at that time, we review and decide if we're ready to go to full design and construction. And so that's when you would again commit to saying, we liked what the results of the investment-grade audit were, we want to move forward, and so yes, we'll sign a contract to go to construction. And as I said before, construction is actually design and construction. So it's design-build. And so then we would go into that phase. And then once construction is complete, we're substantially complete, you're starting to see energy savings. Then we go into the management and verification phase, which is a minimum of one year. It can be longer, but a minimum of one. And at the end of that year, we receive a report saying, yes, we met the guarantees for energy savings, or no, we did not, and here is why, and this is what we'll do to correct it. Now, if the city decided to go out for improvements on their own and not use our process, because we are not required to, we use all of our agencies that work with us choose to, there's no requirement that they have to use us, then the city would have to go out for a request for proposals. And so then again, you would use your own staff time to create and prepare a solicitation that specifies a specific project. And when I say specific project, I mean it has to be, like at City Hall, we want to do HVAC improvements and LED lighting. And so you would prepare that and include the scoring criteria. You would publish it for 14 days and post to your website. You would hold some pre-proposal meetings, issue the addenda to address questions. You would receive and process the bids. You would conduct your own interviews and select an ESCO. You would notify all your applicants. You would negotiate and issue your own contracts. And you would have a direct contractual relationship between yourself and the ESCO. And then we recently did a customer survey with our agencies to find out why they chose to work with us so we could have a better understanding. And these were some of the most common responses that we received. They don't have the staff or the time to complete their own RSP. They are focused on energy savings. They want occupant comfort in their facilities. They like the quick project development. A lot of agencies use us as a specific, they do both. They do their own RSPs, or if they have a specific project they know they want to get done, they'll contact us and say, this is what we want, and this is the ESCO that we want to use to do it. We're not subject to low bid, but best value. Again, DES manages the contracts. And when I say we manage the contracts, we have the contract template. We're the awarding agency, so we handle all of the LNI reporting, the diverse business requirements, the apprenticeship requirements, certified payroll. We make sure all of that is done for the agencies that we work with. And again, subcontractor and equipment preferences, and then project oversight, because they like the fact that we already have rules in place for the ESCOs. What they can charge for professional service fees is negotiated by us and agreed to by them. It's all in one, one shot. And then that was pretty much the end of my presentation. Were there any questions or something you'd like me to cover in more depth?
Yeah. Councilmember Cathcart has a question for you.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I guess share a couple of examples of projects that have been done around the state.
Were there any other questions?
Yeah, we're changing. We had a question, but the audio didn't work.
I'm guessing that there's something wrong with the sound, because we can't hear you. If you're still here.
You can't hear me?
We can hear you.
I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay. All right. So Alyssa, can you hear me right now? No, you're not. Okay. But Cara, can you hear us? All right, can you hear us now, Alyssa?
I can.
And we are still working through this echo problem, and the cure for it is for me to say okay into the mic. So if you hear me say that, it's not talking to you, it's talking to the mic. But Councilmember Cathcart.
I'm wondering if you can share, I've got a couple of questions. Projects.
Can't hear, can't hear, can't hear, can't hear, can't hear.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
All right. How about, can you hear me, Alyssa?
Can.
All right, I'll repeat his question. So Councilmember Cathcart's first question was, can you give us some examples recently of projects around the state just to give us, I mean, you gave us some theoretical ones, but we're just wondering, I think, if you can say, hey, in Seattle, they did this, or Tacoma, they did that.
They did do the first all-electric building along the Alaska Viaduct, which is a pretty impressive feat. I would have to say that the majority of our projects are building efficiency measures-focused. LED lighting, like these are just what typical measures are, boiler replacement, chillers, envelope upgrades. All those, like in Walla Walla, I believe they installed the electric vehicle charging station at the county. Trying to think of some other unique ones. I know at the community colleges in Spokane, they have ongoing, within multiple facilities, different improvements in regards to indoor air quality, which addressing airflow, upgrading controls, just a lot of very similar measures, because a lot of facilities have the same deficiencies across the state. We also now have a large influx of school districts after they received a lot of ESSR funds trying to improve indoor air quality. Wenatchee Valley College is in the process of developing sub-metering so they can comply with the Clean Buildings Performance Standard, and we're working on that currently. So a lot of variety of projects. A lot of our solar projects, believe it or not, are for smaller communities. They have more vacant land areas within their communities, smaller facilities that are easier to address structurally-wise if there is a deficiency in structural strength on the roof. So Toffenish School District has a solar that's actually out past its football field for their high school to reduce the energy use there. They again, too, are also, each of their campuses at Toffenish School District has multiple buildings. So again, they are looking at sub-metering. And we're actually developing a plan with them and the ESCO to look at what they need to do to be in compliance by the different dates. So they have some facilities that are 50,000 square feet and some that are over. So we're looking at each campus by campus. Let me see, Pasco School District is currently working, again, for indoor air quality improvement. And they are working to get their portables taken off of their main building so it doesn't impact their energy use on their existing facilities. Because in theory, portables are not permanent, but they are. So just a variety of different projects. Palm Beach and Hospital recently completed a project. Just variety.
If you ask the question, I'll ask the question. Oh, question, oh, question, oh. Okay. It's working now.
It's working now.
So my follow-up is, is there a way, and I can happily go to a website if there's someplace where it's listed, but just wondering if anywhere we have numbers on kind of the average cost savings from those projects, you know, or the average reduction in energy usage. And then also wondering how many of them either paid for themselves or came close to paying for themselves. You said that that was one of the goals, is to have the project savings pay for the cost of the project.
controls, just a lot of very similar measures, because a lot of facilities have the same deficiencies across the state. We also now have a large influx of school districts after they received a lot of ESTR funds trying to improve indoor air quality. Wenatchee Valley College is in the process of developing sub-metering so they can comply with the Clean Buildings Performance Standard, and we're working on that currently. So a lot of variety of projects. A lot of our solar projects, believe it or not, are for smaller communities. They have more vacant land areas within their communities, smaller facilities that are easier to address structurally-wise if there is a deficiency in structural strength on the roof. So Toppenish School District has a solar that's actually out past its football field for their high school to reduce the energy use there. They again, too, are also, each of their campuses at Toppenish School District has multiple buildings, so again, they are looking at sub-metering, and we're actually developing a plan with them and the ESCO to look at what they need to do to be in compliance by the different dates. So they have some facilities that are 50,000 square feet and some that are over, so we're looking at each campus by campus. Let me see, Pasco School District is currently working, again, for indoor air quality improvement, and they are working to get their portables taken off of their main building so it doesn't impact their energy use on their existing facilities, because in theory, portables are not permanent, but they are. So just a variety of different projects.
I don't think my mic's.
Flambia Basin Hospital recently completed a project. Just a variety, just a variety.
If you ask a question, I'll ask a question.
Oh, question, oh, question, oh, question, oh.
Okay. It's working now.
It's working now.
So my follow-up is, is there a way, and I can happily go to a website if there's someplace where it's listed, but I'm just wondering if anywhere we have numbers on kind of the average cost savings from those projects, you know, or the average reduction in energy usage, and then also wondering how many of them either paid for themselves or came close to paying for themselves. You said that that was one of the goals, is to have the project savings pay for the cost of the project.
I could probably get you the average. I know we tally up the total energy savings that our projects have completed. It may be as simple as looking back at our list of agencies at that data and averaging it out. I will tell you that it does vary greatly depending on the client agency. Some agencies are very excellent at maintaining their facilities and keeping everything operating and functioning properly, and they do maintenance regularly. Others do not, so that would be a huge indication of whether or not the amount of savings you're going to receive. And then what was the second part of those in the average? Is there a list of, oh, how many do the, come out cash positive? Typically, most of them do. And right now, we live in a world of a lot of grants and a lot of federal funding, and so right now, I have, and a lot of state funding that's going to especially districts where there's hardly any output from the district. And technically, we want it unless there is a specific need that you have where you need to exceed or go into negative on your cash flow to get the project completed. We really don't encourage that. We want to, if we thought we were going to get there, we would want to do phasing and help you do capital planning so that we don't have you in the red where you're not able to, you have to take money from somewhere else to fund this project. So we want to look at your energy savings, make sure you're cash flow neutral or positive, and move forward in that way. Typically, we'd recommend not to go below cash flow neutral, and just work on the most important projects that we need to at a Phase 1, and then do another phase. I have lots of agencies that do multiple phases. Whitman County's in Phase 5, again, Toppenish School District's in Phase 5. WSU has been doing this since, for about 20 years now, since even before I started doing it. They've been working using our program. So they use it as a planning tool if they cannot fund it all upfront.
And my last question, sorry, is just, you mentioned that, you know, part of the process is, once completed, reviewing the outcome and measuring the savings, and if in fact, we're not, you know, achieving the savings that we had hoped for, you know, we'd have to go back and correct that. And so I'm just wondering, if we went through the state agency, went through you guys, is there an additional cost to us if in fact, we are not achieving those savings and more has to be done to get the savings that we thought, expected that we would be getting?
No, there's no cost to you. It's all the ESCO guarantee. We require the ESCOs to guarantee the savings. If they need to come back and do additional work to meet those savings, they come back on their own dime.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment for us. Do we have building energy audits? And so who does that?
Yeah, so I think the short answer is that we previously did that many years ago. We have an ESCO identified, McKinstry, which has a local presence here, but we haven't been doing them lately, and one of the reasons for this conversation was to, is to help some of the new players in the administration understand what the opportunities are, so really appreciate your being here, because we've been, Kara and I have been talking to the administration of like, hey, this seems like, you know, it's cash flow neutral, it's only savings, how can we do that? So this is part of that educational. I had a question in terms of if, again, just say the city of Spokane was wanting to get more involved on that audit, is that something we would do, building by building, or would we just say, look, you know, we've got 40 buildings that the city owns, and just start, do the biggest ones first, or how would you, how would you sequence that probably if we were working with you?
First, I would say, if you wanted to look at everything, I would look at your energy data, who's your biggest energy users? And I would also look at the facilities that have a lot of operations and maintenance costs, like, is your equipment near failing? Does your staff keep having to go to that facility to do improvements? That's how I would start. You could do every facility, but that would likely mean that you're going to have a huge audit cost. So you want to narrow down to your biggest energy users, your highest priorities, what's costing you money and time right now to keep it functioning. And I've worked with McKinstry on some of those previous audits with the city, and I know that you guys have a lot of facilities that have a lot of needs. I haven't been in your facilities and toured them in a few years, but I do know, and I know that, I've spoken with some of your maintenance people previously, and they seem to have a pretty good idea of what needs to be addressed and what doesn't, so. I would start with your biggest energy users and the ones that require a lot of continued maintenance costs.
Great, all right, super advice. Other questions? Other question is, you mentioned there's the possibility of loans out there to help on that cash flow issue, and is there kind of a maximum amount a city like ours could access over the next, say, two or three years, or what, scale-wise, what's in your mind about that?
Well, there's two options. There are private lenders who would do just about no limit that you could have, but it depends on how much debt the city wants to take on. And then there's the state treasurer loan program, which is a fairly low interest rate, but they do have payback requirements. So typically, it's a 15- to 20-year payback if you use the state treasurer program, so you'd want to have projects that are really big savers so that you could meet that payback requirement. And there's not really a limit on the loan, it's more in regards to a payback for the state treasurer program. They're more concerned that you're going to actually see the savings versus get the construction done.
Great, all right. Any other questions, comments? All right. So we so appreciate you taking the time to get us reoriented to this program, since all of us are new pretty much to this issue. So thank you so much, and we are going to look forward to working more closely with you in some capacity, because I think the opportunities are great here, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Good, great, thank you. If you have any other questions, just let me know.
Okay, great.
Thanks, bye.
All right, to you. And then for the rest of council, that's all we have scheduled for today. We're, a couple of us are already on spring break who aren't here, but we have spring break next week, so we're not having any big formal council meetings. There's probably some smaller work group meetings, because.
Study session next Thursday?
I don't think there's study session, no. So yeah, so we'll be back on the 11th. We do have double committee on the 11th, that's the penalty for going on spring break, so we'll see you at 10:00 on the 11th for public safety, is that at 10:00, or is it? Yeah, and then urban experience at 1:15. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.